Let's go ahead and get started. I'm not sure if other councilors are going to be joining, but we can convene the meeting now. We have both the city staff and the EverSource representatives that we need. So we'll call the meeting to order for informational purposes. I'm Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the Maintenance and Development Committee. Thank you all for being with us. I think we can just start with a quick round of introductions and then move into the discussion. Chris, we have Chris Signoli, the Director of DPW with us. I think everybody knows. Joe, do you want to introduce your team?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor. I'm Joe Mitchell. I'm Community Relations and Economic Development Specialist for EverSource Energy. I have 22 cities and towns in Western Mass, and Springfield is one of them. To my right here with us is David Velez. He's the Director of Electrical Operations out of the Springfield Work Center. To my left, he'll poke his head into the camera view in a second. Here is Eric Falcone. He's our Manager of Electrical Operations. Rob Davis is here with us. He's our Field Engineer for EverSource Energy. Vanessa Klein is to my right. She's our Account Executive. And Mike Vitiavelli over here is my boss. He's the Manager of Community Relations.
Great. So we're also joined, I see, by some members of the public. We'll allow them to introduce themselves, although we're not anticipating public comment at this meeting. But Betsy, you want to go ahead and introduce yourself?
Betsy Johnson, Springfield resident, and concerned with this issue, particularly the LED conversion, going back to when we had a separate Springfield, what did we call it, Green Committee or something like that, that Jesse was involved with, but also very active with the Wayfinders Advocates Group, who this is one of our top three priorities, and two other folks from that entity have just joined. So I'll let them explain the multiple-year effort dealing with getting, improving, our concern is basically improving the lighting for pedestrian safety.
Thank you, Betsy. Ms. B., did you want to introduce yourself as well? I'm not sure. I'm not sure she's actually connected to audio. Emily, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, hi there. I'm Emily Tebow from Wayfinders, Community Building and Engagement. As Betsy said, I'm here sort of on behalf of the residents who are concerned about lighting issues.
Thanks, Emily. And I think B. is probably logging off to log back in, but B. Duberri was with us. She's the Director of Community Engagement for Wayfinders. So I'd like to address this in two parts. The first relative to the existing state of the lighting system across the city of Springfield and anticipated repairs to that system as it currently exists. And then I'd like to move into a conversation on LED conversion. Chris, do you want to just kick things off? You know, we're hearing a lot of continued reports of streetlight outages. I did a drive down, just one example, St. James Avenue from State Street up to the Springfield Plaza, and, you know, there were no less than 11 streetlights, nonoperational, just on that one stretch. So, you know, we know we have a system-wide failure, in my opinion, of the lighting system. It's been going on for a long time. I know we've made spurts of improvements. Where are we right now in terms of streetlight repair and keeping what is currently in place functioning?
Well, I'll let Joe handle that question directly on that. But on the city side, there's kind of two pieces. Number one, when lights are out, there are two methods to report them, and they can go to 311, which eventually do come to the DPW, or they can direct it into EverSource. Complaints that we receive with regard to EverSource's system, is they're looking, EverSource is looking for a poll number for the simple reason is that, you know, using your example, Jesse, of lights being out on St. James Avenue, whenever Source goes out there during the day, they don't know which ones you're talking about. So we do need to get poll numbers, address locations as best as we can. As we receive those, we forward them into our system to EverSource, and depending upon length of time of certain things, me and, usually me and Joe go back and forth on status of repairs, whether there's an underground issue, a supply issue, et cetera, on those. So I can let Joe talk about the day-to-day operations of what they do and how they do it.
Go ahead.
Actually, I think David Velez is going to tackle this first one. Sure, just speaking about the nuts and bolts operational aspect of it. So, you know, definitely aware of, you know, the residents of Springfield are seeing lots of lights out. You know, we are talking about a population of over 14,000 lights, of just right-of-way lights. As of last week, as of 3/18, the number of open work orders that we see that we need to address is about 75. Now, it's not to say there's only 75 lights out. Each work order could have multiple lights, you know, particularly a street, et cetera. It's also possible that we could have multiple work orders from the same light. That's just by the nature of how they come in and how they're recorded. But we do have about 75 open work orders out of, again, 14,000 lights, just to put that in scale. Of those 75 work orders, roughly half, a little over 30, are what I would call in a new state, that how they come into us as just, we've been made aware there's a light that's out, and we have to get out there and visit it and diagnose what's wrong. There's currently about 32 of those as of the end of last week, and all of those were one-week-old, meaning that all the previous new lights, unvisited lights, were already processed, dealt with, resolved before that week. So the unresolved, unvisited lights as of last week, one-week-old, about 30. And we are committed to, you know, get those done. We really strive to, within two weeks, do that. So I would commit that, you know, by 4/1, that those specific work orders will be visited, hopefully resolved, but in one, if not resolved, then at least moved forward in the process. What I mean by that, sometimes we can go visit a light and resolve it immediately. It's a simple matter of changing a bulb or a photo eye. Other times, it's more complicated. We may have to replace a head, which we can often do. Sometimes it is even more complicated. There is a bad feed, and we have to replace the wiring going to that light, and that may involve excavation, and so that will further delay something. And some lights, particularly when you start dealing with decorative lights, are not things that are kept readily available on hand, and they require special order of stock. And that would be the biggest delay. So particularly those lights that we've seen downtown on State Street, you know, the ones that are the decoratives, we've been waiting quite a while, and that's, you know, just due to stock, global supply issues. So I hope that gives a general sense of the workflow.
And just to add something that Chris said, that we need poll numbers, that's, I mean, that's great, but not required, but it does help us if it has an address. If you say, you know, State Street and multiple lights, and Chris is right with that, is, you know, generally, the crews are working during the day. We do have some night crews that can see them when they're out. But as much detail as possible when you're reporting the lights will be helpful to help us address it more promptly.
But we do want to state, it's not required. We don't require somebody get out of their car and hunt down a poll number in order to report a light. If you have an address in an intersection, that's a good start. Please do report that.
Do we, are we tracking on the city side turnaround time?
We are not, because we do not know. We don't get reports back, nor do we go investigating. When we put the work order in, I don't have staff or anybody else to go out there and find out when lights were fixed. I usually get, you know, every couple of weeks, I get a list from Joe that says, hey, over the last three weeks, we've replaced these. On a daily basis, we don't track individual light repairs.
And do we, I mean, we're paying, what, a little over $3 million a year for maintenance and electricity on the 14,000 lights?
Correct.
So do we get charged for the lights when they're nonoperational?
No, we pay a flat fee per light in the city.
Regardless of whether they're on or not?
Correct.
Why?
That's the way the billing is set up with EverSource.
So what's our recourse for the large number of lights that we know are out across the city? I mean, I feel like I'm hearing that, you know, we're working on a two-week turnaround time. We're working on, you know, asking residents to report lights out, but we've been having that conversation for four years, and we still see a really large number of lights out. So I feel like there has to be some recourse for the city to, you know, hold EverSource accountable for the repair of the lights and/or figure out a better system for repairing what currently exists. Have we had any conversations around that yet, or what can we do to push that conversation forward?
Well, number one, the DPW does not pay the bills. The bills are submitted to finance, and anything electric in the city does not go through individual departments for approval. The only thing that DPW pays is we pay the cost for traffic signals, because those are individually billed. With regard to, you know, recourse with EverSource, you know, and I guess, you know, as they stated, you know, what is the definition of a lot of lights out? We have 14,000 of them in the city, and, you know, Joe may kick me under the table, but I'm going to guess at any one time, we probably do have, you know, 300-plus out in the city, and we will always have 300-plus out in the city, simply because of that many that we're having in the city. But at this point, you know, we have, you know, other than having discussions with EverSource that says, hey, these have been out for a while, they need to be addressed, and bring them back to the top of the pile, you know, we really don't get involved in any other, you know, non-payment of bills, et cetera.
And we had talked in the past before the pandemic, which certainly disrupted many operations, about doing, both as an exercise in trying to get back to a strong baseline, but also as a preparation for possible conversion in the future, we had talked about doing some sort of lighting audit to go through the city and identify streetlights that were out, as well as areas that may not be lit as well as we would like them to be, just from, you know, the sort of piecemeal way that lighting has been installed in the city throughout the last several decades. Have we had any conversations with EverSource about running something like that? Or, Chris, do you think that that's possible through the DPW for the city to audit the lighting across the city as a project on our end, and then use that data to work with EverSource and make some improvements?
Well, what we do is, and more so, we do it in the winter, because we are running second and third shifts. We go up, when our guys are out, every time we find something that's not lit, or we see something that's not lit, we reported it. To do an audit of all of the streetlights in the city, you know, I mean, that would be a, you know, that would be an undertaking of, you know, decent proportion and decent cost. And I'm always reluctant for the city to spend dollars on a utility that we don't own. You know, I always, that's why I always kind of throw stuff back at Joe and say, you know, hey, you know, we'll report stuff, but, you know, us doing an audit on, you know, and working with EverSource on an audit is one thing, but I don't know if it's in the city's best interest to be spending money, you know, on a utility that we don't own. I mean, we have the same issues, you know, on the gas side, making sure we have service, and with Comcast, and with water and sewer as well. But, you know, our conversations that I go back and forth with Joe, you know, I know we talk at least weekly about different things, and whenever anything needs to be brought to the top of the pile, that's a concern, you know, I definitely do that. But, you know, we've talked about, you know, audits, and, you know, I'll let Joe expand on that a little bit, or his team expand on that a little bit.
Sure. Yeah, Joe, what do you think? And I do want to say, Joe is always very, Joe, you're very responsive when I reach out personally, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you guys being here today. So, you know, what's your team's take on some sort of baseline audit, both to, you know, try to get to a better operational point, but also take a look at lighting as it exists in different areas, because it has been a piecemeal installation over the last, you know, 75 years. So we know there's some areas where things could be lit a little bit better. We hear from residents and businesses pretty frequently, I think, especially, we hear from the business community in the South End quite frequently. We hear from folks in Old Hill quite frequently, especially some of the older and more built-up areas of the city, where, you know, the streetlights were sort of installed over time. They weren't, they weren't, you know, sort of installed in a planned way. So, you know, how can EverSource be helpful with that sort of audit, and would EverSource be able to undertake that sort of activity?
Yeah, that's a tough one. So I know we, EverSource, like since the daylight savings change last winter, and then, and that definitely increases the phone calls, because obviously for your residents, it's more visible when they're coming home from work, or they're traveling about, and, you know, it's close to supper time, and it's already dark, and the lights are or are not on. So we've put in a concerted effort since the fall. We've put together a team of mostly the folks here in this room, trying to tackle it and get our arms around it. There are some supply chain issues and other things that are causing delay. But I'll tell you this, that the city does have, excuse me, you do have our attention. This is something I've been working with Chris Signoli quite a bit on, and communicating back and forth. As far as an audit, I believe we already know for the tariff and through our account executive, you know, we know where the lights are, what their wattage is, and what it's billed to the city, and as they're converted to something different, whether it be a decorative or an LED, there are changes made through the account executive, you know, to the city on a regular basis, you know, to make sure that the inventory is accurate and that the city's being built correctly.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm aware that we have a paper document that tells us how many lights we have and where they allegedly are, and what their various design is. But I think, I think what I'm implying is that, I don't know that we actually know that that's all accurate at this point. I mean, it's been built up over such a many number of years, that I think it would be worth taking a holistic look at the system as a whole and approaching it that way. So does EverSource have capacity to go out, or using technology of some kind, assess that operational capacity? And/or could you take that back to your higher-ups and bring that as a proposal for us to be able to do some level of, some level of operational assessment?
Let me take a, you know, you mentioned the technology, and unfortunately, the current state of technology, it is not there. We don't have a way to see our end, what lights are out, you know, whether that be streetlights or any light. I mean, I would kind of make this, you know, use the analogy similar to when your lights go out during a storm. We have a lot of instrumentation and a lot of controls, but believe it or not, we still have to wait for the homeowners to call us to let us know the lights are out. We can predict, we can model things like that, but at the end of the day, it's that report to us saying the lights are out that really pulls the trigger and lets us know we have to respond. So streetlights are a similar way. There is no way for us to reach out into the system and have it report back to us. It's just, that's not the way the system is designed. You know, our resources, you know, we are out every night, whether it be streetlights, which we do, you know, multiple, we have multiple crews every day, assign the streetlights, assuming that there's not other pressing issues, weather, et cetera. We're on streetlights, we are on residential, we are on new construction. You know, we have a lot of work that our team does for safety and reliability, and patrolling and looking for lights that are out is just not something that we can efficiently devote a resource to.
Right.
Counselor, can I say something?
Shortly, Ms. Okay.
Go ahead.
And I do, I do. And Councilman King Allen as well have joined us since we started. What I wanted to say, before we move into a conversation about actually trying to fix some of this, is that a streetlight audit is not a foreign concept. I mean, I get contacted by consultants that conduct streetlight audits in communities across the United States frequently. So this is a real thing that can be done. The question is, is it going to be done? And if it's going to be done, is it going to be done by the city of Springfield, or is it going to be done by EverSource? And I intend to arrive at an answer to that one way or another, maybe not by the end of this meeting, but in a short time, because we know that we have a problem. We've had the problem for a long time. To that point, I know that there have been some individual conversions now to LED in lights across the city. We've seen them popping up. Can Chris or the representatives from EverSource talk a little bit about how that is happening and being determined right now? And then I'd like to talk about what can be done on the large scale. I think probably EverSource.
Your group.
Yeah.
Joe, I'll leave that up to your group.
Yeah, so, sorry, can't really see me on camera here. This is Eric Falcone, I'm the Manager of Operations. So the conversions right now to LED are done on an as-needs basis. So essentially, if technician goes out and evaluates the light to be repaired, I'm able to fix the existing luminaire that's there, whether by changing a bulb, fixing a connection, or changing the photo eye. At that point, the next step is to replace the light as a whole fixture. So anytime we replace that light, we're going to replace it with the LED equivalent. So that's the current process as it stands to converting existing fixtures to LED.
So how many have been done thus far as a result of that?
About 170.
And of those 170, when you make that conversion, does that change the rate that the city pays? Because my understanding is LED lights are billed differently.
It does change in our billing system. They enter the new information, and you are billed under the LED lighting rate.
Okay. Can we get a calculation on the total cost savings on that, 175 to date? Not immediately, but in the future?
Yeah, I'm sure we could pull something together that shows what was replaced, or maybe just ensure you table like a one-for-one, whether it be a X number watts for, you know, high-pressure sodium, when it's converted to the LED version. We have those tables. We can share those with you.
That'd be great. So.
And then you kind of do the rough math, and then by 170, you know, maybe take an average. So there's different types of bulbs, different rates, but you could.
That's fine.
Yeah.
But to that point, what do we have to do to get to a point where we have a system-wide LED conversion, at least as our current, as our current system exists? What do we have to do to get to that point? It, there's a couple of ways to do it, but since EverSource is here, what would we have to do to get to that point through EverSource?
Yeah, I mean, I could speak to that. I'm not muted, am I?
No, you're on.
You're on. This is Rob Davis from, in the field end here in Design Supervisor here. It would be a multi-year effort. It would take a large capital investment on EverSource's part, and there would be significant cost changes, you know, to the city, starting next year. If our rates get approved, you would see some reduction as we implement those lights. But then, the other question, which has been, you know, somewhat of our problem lately, is just the amount of LEDs we'd be able to get from manufacturers. That may severely limit how many we can do in a year.
So what?
If I may jump in on that, and I'm going to admit that I'm not an expert on these agreements and the pricing and structure, but my understanding, and someone here on the table, please jump in and correct me, the city has an agreement, you know, I'll call it a quote rental agreement with EverSource to provide these lights. And you're paying a per-light charge for the light itself, and then you're paying for the consumption of energy. And so to answer the question, what would it take, you currently have existing agreements for a specific luminaire type, the current old-style incandescence. So if you wanted a wholesale change, let's take aside material availability and resources and time. If you wanted that, it would require an amendment of the agreement to say you now want to go from the old-style incandescence to the LEDs. There would be a different, currently higher rate for the fixed equipment charge. Presumably, because of the lower consumption of energy, these would net out, and over the long term, there would be a savings. But to be clear, right now, the city has an agreement for the incandescent style. That's what you are paying for. That's what is provided. However, because that is an old, you know, and I'll say, you know, currently being phased-out technology, when we go and replace that equipment, we are not seeking to find another quote, "old incandescent." We are just putting in the newest, greatest technology of the LED and changing the pricing accordingly.
Yeah, and I think that's sort of my concern is, so now we're seeing like a piecemeal changeover, and in our, sort of in our conversations pre-pandemic, in other committees on the city council, you know, one of the concerns that was raised by the community was, when we do LED changeover, we want to make sure that it's designed in such a way that, you know, it's actually meeting the needs of the community, that we're doing an audit at the same time to make sure that we are installing additional lighting where it needs to be done. And there were some environmental factors as well. Overall, I think we all agree it's a positive environmental change, because it reduces our total energy consumption. But in some communities, there were, you know, there were issues with the design that was used and how it emitted light and in what directions, you know, in terms of disturbing neighbors or drivers or passersby. So we want to make sure that's done correctly. Because it's a positive environmental change overall, though, are there no funds available to utilities like EverSource, either through the federal or state government, that could assist in making that changeover?
And this is Joe Mitchell. So not that we're aware of, so there are certain energy efficiency grants, but as far as a utility using one, no, not that I'm aware of, and I'm not so sure that even a municipality can access one of, they're more meant for.
They own their light.
Yeah, Joe, if you own your lights, yes, that's, that's correct. So some of the neighboring communities have purchased their lights, and then they have access to certain energy efficiency resources. Whereas these lights are owned by EverSource, by the utility, we don't, we can't participate in those kinds of grants.
Chris, what are you, what are your thoughts on the current conversation on LED conversion? I know that we've gone back and forth over the years about the various different options, but I feel like we're reaching a bit of a critical, I think we're past a point, a critical point, in sort of deciding which direction we want to go with it. And I know we've had some conversations about different options, but what, you know, what are your thoughts right now? How can we move the conversation forward?
Well, the issue from the city side is that financially, it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever for the city to purchase and retrofit the lights. We would be looking at a 15-plus-year return on investment, and within those 15 years, we would be looking at having to replace the lights, most likely. So our whole discussion has always been about what, if the city can do it, what financially do we do? And it ends up being, then, we then have to service the lights. And as part of the conversation that we're having right now, obviously, people have some concerns about EverSource being able to service the lights with a, you know, billion-dollar corporation. The city of Springfield with nobody, I mean, we have, we would have to hire people, or hire a company to be able to do that. And basically, the financial analysis that we did on that, then basically ends up, we end up saying, paying the exact same amount that we do every year, then having, then owning the lights, having to replace them, having to deal with knockdowns, having to deal with all the different things in the city. So from a financial standpoint, is where the discussion always falls off the table for the city.
Yeah. So what about working with EverSource on a plan for conversion, where, you know, you have city control or city input into the project, but, you know, it ultimately ends with a new contract with EverSource? What about that option? Because it's in everybody's best interest to get the conversion done. Like, I mean, we are one of the only cities that hasn't done a conversion. The current system is clearly failing. We've identified all of that in the beginning of the meeting, right, where, you know, the best we can seem to do is make phone calls to EverSource when we see lights out, and hope that they're able to, you know, replace them with the outdated technology that's still being used. So I feel like we're sort of all at the point where conversion makes sense. We just got to figure out what the most cost-effective way to do it is. We just got to figure out what the most cost effective way to do it is.
And I know our discussions that we had with Eversource, a full conversion in the city. Uh, I'm going to guess from last time we did it is probably about $10 million just for conversion on that. And then it's a matter, you know, then it's a matter of how you do it with 14,000 lights in the city. You know, I I I have the discussions with Joe, but I can guarantee that where it's going to be is going to be, it's going to be scheduled manpower and and funds. And in the end, uh, you know, it's it's it really is going to end up being a financial issue more than anything else. Because as I said, if the city were to take over these lights and ownership, I think it would be a financial hole that we would then have dealing with every year forever. And I know whenever I say to somebody like Joe, I say, you know, what would what would you do if the city asked to buy the lights, you know? If it were up to him, you'd give him to me tomorrow. And but obviously, they can't do that through through their with their rate payers and stuff like that. So, you know, I I, you know, me and Joe, we were having a discussion about this this morning. And we can continue to do that to try and put a savings together or a plan together with regard to retrofitting. But then I also have to go through, as was stated, when we're doing retrofitting right now, we're also getting a charge for the lights themselves as well. So we do have to make sure that, you know, that while we may be getting a less energy cost, we're getting a higher maintenance bill at the same time. So that's the sort of stuff I do have to work through with Joe.
You know, and Counselor Letterman, something that Chris just hit on is, you know, he's correct. So with if you put a new fixture on that, that rental for that fixture is higher, but the energy consumption is less. So it is something, you know, we can start a conversation, you know, with Chris and and with your budget folks. You know, how to proceed and and what kind of a timeframe and, you know, what neighborhoods first. But then also something of note is there is a new rate case that's coming up in the near future. And that may may make some changes and may provide some relief. So I mean, going forward, I'm happy to, you know, continue this conversation with Mr. Signoli and with the county executive and engineer to try and, you know, and and see where the the appetite is, you know, at City Hall, that the folks are paying the bills, you know, on on how to move forward, if that's something that we want to, you know, pursue.
Yeah, well, I think it's something that we have to pursue. And and this meeting, you know, was really intended just to gather some initial information in in the current context. I mean, we've been having these conversations for many years. There are many community groups that especially wayfinders, folks who are here today, who have been very active around the issue. But I think we recognize in the post pandemic, it's a, you know, we have to update the conversation, we have to update the numbers. And and I think, though, we also have to make a plan to go forward. And, you know, I just, I I can't imagine that there's not a way for us to work with our state and federal partners and and figure out a way to make this work for the city of Springfield. All of the infrastructure money that we're told at some point is coming, even looking at some of the money that's already available. I I can't imagine that there's not a way for us to get to a point where it will make sense. In my estimation, I think it's going to take probably some investment, both from the city ahead of time and from Eversource. So, you know, I'm hopeful we can, we can get to that point. You know, what what I'd like to leave this meeting with is is hopefully a a commitment for Eversource to have those conversations with the city, with you, Chris, about how we could put this into into action and and bring some proposals forward. I recognize, you know, we'll also need the cooperation of the administration and I can commit to to reaching out to them relative to trying to make this a higher priority. But it just, it just seems to me that this is the time to do it with with the federal and state money that could be out there. Joe, if you, I don't know what rate case you're particularly referring to, but if you could send me some details on that, I'll definitely take a look at it. You know, that would be helpful. So so what I think I'd like to do is, you know, I I feel like I have some some more contextual information that's helpful to me moving forward. I didn't anticipate a public comment at this meeting, but I do see we have a number of residents on the call, so I do appreciate them spending time with us and and taking the time out of their day. So I do want to give folks maybe just, you know, two minutes each, if anybody would like to, you know, just share their thoughts. I know some of you have been working on this and we do have Chris and and the Eversource representatives here. So just before that, Counselor Tim Allen is with us as well. Counselor Allen, did you have anything you wanted to add? I know you came in a little late, but I appreciate you joining too. And I just wanted to give you a chance and then we'll give each resident, if they would like, just two minutes to to share any thoughts. And then we can talk about next steps. Tim?
Yeah, thank you. No particular thoughts or deep thoughts on it, other than trying to catch up on the issue. And here are the issues as described by you and Chris and Joe. I just, my question, and it doesn't need to be addressed right now, is if we're one of the few cities or towns that has not done this, how did the others afford to do it or what what was the driver to get them to do it? And I'd rather not deal with that right now because that might be a long answer, but and defer to the public to ask their questions. But that one is sitting out there for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any, the the communities that have converted wholesale to LEDs are the ones that have purchased their lights. You won't find larger, larger, larger towns and cities that have done a wholesale conversion unless they've actually purchased them. Just because it's, it is such a daunting task and, you know, with, and you probably talked with some consultants there, Counselor Letterman, through the years. You know, what they do is they take on the financial burden, you know, in the immediate sense, and they get paid off, paid over the long term with the energy savings. So short of doing that, I don't think there are any large communities that have converted to LED where the utility owns the streetlights.
And just to just to follow up on that, we've probably met with two dozen consultants over the last three or four years and got into these discussions with one of them about exactly what Joe is talking about, going through a conversion plan, maintenance, the whole nine yards, and the numbers actually looked decent until we got to a point where the ownership of the lights would not be the city, but it would be with the vendor. And that basically, my problem with that is, okay, now we have 100% of the responsibility, but we don't have any of the ownership, which kind of was an odd thing. And they said, well, we would need that because it doesn't financially work, so we would have to have ownership of asset. That was kind of an odd thing where, so when we've been dealing with all of these different entities that are interested in doing retrofit work or whatever in the city of Springfield, they start running through the numbers and on that. And, you know, one of the ones, Counselor Letterman, was the, you know, the gentleman that I'm reviewing his stuff now. Was it was a couple of different companies, General Electric, Siemens, companies like that have been through the city constantly over the last few years.
Yeah, I don't think we want to go towards privatization of the lights. I don't think anybody wants
Right, and that's kind of what they were, what they're pushing, because then they own, I'm sorry, then they own the asset.
Okay. All right, Counselor Allen, thank you. If there's any resident on the call, if you want to raise your hand, you don't have to, but I may want to. So if anybody would like to raise their hand, we can, we can allot you two minutes just to share your thoughts and then we'll move towards next steps. Betsy, two minutes.
Well, just following up on, I think, was it five, six years ago? And Liz sat through this long presentation at that point. We had a professor from Smith College who's and they very involved with the Dark Dark Sky Organization, who gave us a very enlightening presentation, which is actually available by YouTube, and maybe you've seen it, that indicates, shows that all LED conversions are not equal, in fact, can, in fact, make visibility of pedestrians on the street worse. So while on the, while we're very much pushing for this conversion, we don't want it done for the cheap so that it makes the situation for pedestrians actually worse. And that deals with what the blue light spectrum is, what the angle, whether the light has is pointing down, how it's angled downward and a number of other issues like that. And so I would hope that you would be prepared to give the city that kind of level of detail as to the specifications of these LED conversions that you are doing, so that we know that it's something that we in fact, really want and will in fact, actually improve lighting in the system. And then I get, just quickly, I get told over and over again, why doesn't Eversource have a crew that has figured out how, you know, whether over a two week period, a month period, it could every, you know, drive up and down every street in Springfield over the course of a week, two weeks, a month, six weeks, and be the one identifying these lights? A system that depends on residents reporting lights has proven that it does not work. I'm walking the other morning up Pearl Street, there's three lights that are out between Chestnut and Federal. I'm not stopping on my walk, I don't have a pen, a paper, or I do have a phone, I guess I could have written in the numbers, but I'm not stopping and taking numbers. And then every time I try to put it through your system, it's always out. So it just doesn't work. So to say there's only five, 75 lights out, that's because 75 people have gone to extraordinary lengths to report something to you. You have got to take responsibility for finding and make getting the lights enough for me, enough, I before I get on my soapbox.
Thank you very much. And perhaps we can, we we can also schedule a meeting at a more convenient time at some point, too, for for other, everybody to attend. And I know folks have a lot of thoughts about this. Like I said, I was hoping to just get some initial information today in the new context of everything that's going on and then and push forward. But I appreciate your comments. Ms. O'Gill.
Thank you, Counselor, and I, sorry, I apologize for interrupting earlier. I didn't understand the context of the meeting and you answered, you asked and God answers to many of my questions. And I would just echo Betsy, it's not that residents don't want to, Mr. Mitchell and your colleagues. People are driving at night on these streets that are very busy. They cannot stop their car to look for a pole number. Most of us don't have flashlights in our car. If the light's out, we can't see the pole number. There is way too much money out there, whether it's our own stimulus money. And I don't think that the city of Springfield should have to bear this burden. My, I've lived in other cities like Chicago and Detroit, and those cities are being very progressive with their electric providers and letting them know these are symbiotic relationships and we have choices. And I agree with Betsy that we need some strategy. And if you don't have the crew, then empty up the money or split it with the city and let's hire more of our young people to do walking audits in the neighborhood and crews and employ them to write these numbers down. Like, there are lots of ways to skin this cat and we need to think outside of the box. Again, I don't think it should just be our burden, Counselor Allen or Counselor Letterman. But there's too much money, we're buying buildings that are going to cost a gazillion dollars to repair and the majority of the jobs aren't going to be to residents. So let's think creatively about how to solve this problem and kill two birds with one stone, if you will. And for our Eversource friends, you need to understand that we as residents have a very hard time separating all of this. We are all experiencing crazy increases in our electric service. Mr. Signoli, maybe you can tell me if the city is also experiencing those increases. But what happens for me as a resident is that I'm paying more out of pocket for the service in my house and then the service that is being provided by my city, that's not meeting my needs as a resident who's driving in the early morning or at night. You need to understand that we are not just the Springfield of 20 years ago. We are bodies of organized people who recognize that we have choice and will exercise that choice. And we want to do it in partnership with you, but you've got to show up better than you've been showing up. You just absolutely have to.
Thank you, Ms. O'Gill. Seeing no, no further hands, I'd like to talk about next steps. I will commit to having a renewed conversation with the administration and finance about what our options might look like. On Eversource's end, I would like to see that rate situation, Joe, that you mentioned, the rate case. I'd like to see the cost savings analysis on the 137 or so LED converts that have already happened. I'd like to make sure we're getting those savings. And then, Chris, you and I can follow up the same conversation with with the administration. In the meantime, I think I'd like to, I'm going to have a conversation with some of the advocates around the the outages that we're currently seeing, because I I think the the ultimate solution has to go towards conversion, but we have to have a plan for the interim. And I think I think we can have a conversation about that as a community. Eversource, Joe, do you have any final thoughts you'd like to share?
No, but I will, I'll get you that information regarding the new rate case that's coming up. I think it's this summer and then the 137 conversions. I'll get you that info and then whatever next steps are, either between myself, Vanessa Klein and Chris Signoli, or whatever it takes to, you know, keep the conversation going anyway and move it forward if we can.
Thank you.
Jesse, could you also guess and get the specifications of the kinds of LEDs that are being used in the conversions? So that we can see whether it's, I mean, I can ask the fellow at Smith whether he'd approve.
Thank you. Yeah, Joe, if you could send
Yeah, and I have, one, it's on our website, but then also I can, it's a couple pages, has a different types of fixtures and lumens and things and candle power and stuff like that.
That's fine. Chris, any other thoughts?
I could find my mouse. At this point, Counselor, no, I don't have any.
Thank you very much. All right. Well, thank you all for joining us. We'll follow up shortly and and hopefully we'll make some progress this year on this issue. Have a good rest of your day.
Thank you for your time, Counselor.
Thank you.